Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming. We've got a lot of visitors tonight. I appreciate that. Hopefully, we'll enlighten you tonight. Tonight's our work session as we prepare for our first of May board meeting. Next week, Ms. Malouf will have the indication. The colors will be presented by the Winder Bear High School Junior ROTC. We'll approve the minutes. We'll approve the agenda. We'll look at some committee reports. The Clean School Committee and Mr. Kane and Ms. Malouf and Mr. Raper on that this month. Also, I guess we won't have the Teacher of the Year yet. We're working on that. Great, great teachers to recognize. Dr. McMichael has some superintendent recognitions. Georgia Student Technology Competition winner and Governor's Honor Program for 2022 finalists. We may or may not have some visitors and we may have some requests to appear before the board. Let's see. We're gonna start off tonight with the superintendent's department report. Dr. Green?
Yes, I have the communications report there for you to review. And also, the 140th day of school student enrollment report is also there for you to review. I won't take the time to go over those. You can review them on your own, but if you have any questions, I think that's answered.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Houston?
First, we'll go over the invoices paid between 2,000 and 24,999. And the first one is Heineman. It's paid out of consolidated funds, $13,166.48. And that was for books for the classroom library at Bethlehem Elementary School. The next one is wireless equipment. They have school food nutrition funds, $15,781. And that's for a steamer at Bassa. And then the last one is Imagine Learning from Title III Funds. And that is for English learners, learning platform district-wide. And I think King, whoever he is, is gonna go into a little bit more detail about that during our time. The next thing I want to go over is just that we received our audit back for this year 2021. And there were, this is the good, good, good report here from the Georgia D A B. That's the second to the last paragraph. It's been determined that review of your audit report for the year ended June 30, 2021. There are no findings and or questions, costs. So you had a great, clean audit. The primary person on this is our audit, Academy Audit Director, Pam McMarish. But this is everybody from our principals, our bookkeepers, our finance department, our directors, our superintendent, our board. That's what makes this happen. And we're looking at a better, clean report for this year.
Congratulations on that. I know how hard it gets.
Ms. Houston? I have a question about the preceding information on the cost. Was that steamer, an additional steamer or a new steamer? I mean?
The steamer went out. Is that correct, correct? Do you remember about that one? I think the steamer went out at Bassa and we had to get a new one. And it was knocked out of our lives.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Thank you. See you in a minute.
Good evening. I'd like to update you on our projects. Our new elementary school. We've got some concrete that's been poured out there. Even the blue areas there, those down on concrete over there. I think we're on a weekly basis now. So Friday, there'll be another four. And we're gonna have the foundations done here very soon. And then these subsequent forward reports will continue to take place. There's a little steel right out there. And start on vertical. Things are moving along very well out there. Please progress. Okay. For our elementary school, then update on, we'll call these miscellaneous projects. But here at the PDC, that first photo there is kind of before. And then below it is the after. This building, it's hard to leave, but it's been over 20 years. And so it's just time to carry on some improvements. So the carpet that we are standing on here, we've got that throughout the building now. We'll replace the quarter floor here this weekend. And along with the lights that were done not long ago, we're freshening up the central office here. Also, mold units, these are units that have been relocated. From Westside Middle School, the state of elementary school, take that picture, it's Kennedy. But Denver, Frank, Ray, four units were brought over from Westside to state to Kennedy, Auburn, to Auburn and to Atlas. Continue all of that process throughout the spring and summer. Power situated, being there cleaning those things up, getting ready for next school year.
Thank you. Thanks, sir. Dr. Mo?
Good evening. It is my honor to share with you this evening information regarding honorary diploma that has been considered and approved for Ms. Betty Sue Thomas Beck. Ms. Beck would have graduated from Barrow County Schools in the 1950s. However, in her 11th grade year, there were some family circumstances that prevented her ability to receive her diploma from Barrow County Schools. On May 10th, she will turn 90 years old. And she continued to pursue her education. She pursued her GED after she left Barrow County Schools and went to Ohio and now resides in Texas. But the love of Barrow County Schools and one of the former Barrow County Schools would mean to her has been something that has resonated in her heart. And at 90 years old, that is still something that is important to her. So her son, Mr. Marvin Beck, contacted us and we were able to do some research for some old records. And we were able to verify everything that keeps Ms. Beck looking as young as she does and as beautiful as she does on screen. So it is with great compassion and at the heart of what we do, which is supporting students no matter what age they are. So it is our pleasure to release an honorary diploma to her for her 90th birthday. The big challenge now is to keep it a secret because we know people in Ohio, we know people in Texas. And we're trying to keep it a secret for her birthday. But as I said, she's a beautiful lady. She's still very active, still driving. And she still remembers as the 1950s and Glenwood High School and being a segregated environment what that diploma would mean to her. So I thank everybody in the audience. I thank the members of our Board of Education for supporting her. And Mr. Beck is watching us online. And so, Mr. Marvin Beck, we support you and we say happy 90th birthday to your mother. So let's give Ms. Beck a hand. It's time, Mr. Ali Beck and Dr. David D. on our voice following you with information about the Georgia Technology Competition.
Thank you.
Great, awesome. Great opportunity to follow that. So as y'all mentioned earlier, next week on the agenda, there'll be some recognitions for the Georgia Student Technology Competition. One of the benefits of our school system engaging in these competitive competitions on the academic side of things really gives us an opportunity to shine a light on what our young folks are capable of, what they're actively doing, and just the efforts that they put forth that we're just not aware of sometimes. And tonight, I have the privilege to introduce, I know there's been a lot of chatter, especially around this specific area the last couple of days about celebrities in the area. And so if you do have two here tonight, two amazingly talented, gifted and hardworking seventh graders that are arts and information programs, the writers, producers and stars of the Graham and Colin Show, Graham Mole and Colin Show.
David, we are the Graham and Colin Show, Barrow County School System's very own student-led podcast. Hello everyone. My name is Graham Mole and I am host of the Graham and Colin Show. Both Graham and I have to separate each other in different roles so we can achieve what we need in a small amount of time that we have on podcast day. I take lead in our post-production activities such as handling our website. I also handle our interviewees, as we call them. My main goal is to connect to the public and allow them an opportunity to learn more about our community leaders. I'm gonna go ahead and move on to the call.
Hello, I'm the co-host of the Graham and Colin Show. I myself handle the in-interview logistics and editing. I also write and format all questions. Writing the questions beforehand helps us with time and meeting topics. And even though me and Graham both have this guideline that we follow, we love to add side questions based on our interviewees' responses. And when me and Graham are together and put our minds to work, we make it incredibly, and I think that that is the reason where we that is the reason that we are here today.
Winning the audition category for the 7th, 8th grade division of Barrow County Student Technology Competition. After that, we just couldn't stop. So we had to move on to Northeast Regional Technology Competition, where we had also received first place.
We then moved on to the state student technology competition, where we received second place in our category division. Today, our main goal is to share with you our experience about this journey, what our hardships were and how it helped us grow individually and as a team, and what the Graham and Colin Show could all come back from.
We will even give you an inside look at what the future of the Graham and Colin Show will hold.
So what is the Graham and Colin Show, we may be asking?
Well, it's a game-oriented podcast led by two of the very own Barrow County School System students. Our main goal of the podcast is to share the inside lives and day-to-day tasks of our community leaders. We discuss what they do and why they're beneficial to the Barrow community.
We take pride in the Graham and Colin Show and hope that our listeners find our podcasts beneficial. We spend most of our time outside of school working on writing the next interviewee and researching their influence in the community.
We look for major details within research so we can provide correct, top-faced questions. Now, on an average interview day, we conduct key meetings with our interviewee during our class free time. We only have an hour and 45 minutes to complete the interview and edit an episode. So publish the episode for our self-made website and then clean up all of our equipment. So we choose to space our time precisely to not disturb fashion construction.
One thing that both Graham and I become is to support our very own principal, Chris Shawn Williams. We know that we can go out there with any idea and almost always get the okay to make it happen.
But first of all, and to support our teachers, we have been able to construct and operate a podcast strictly on our own.
We create our new episodes using Soundtrack, also known as a doll. We then use, we then upload our episodes for our website.
Our website is made by both Graham and I and Google Sites Creation Tool. We use graphic images, action colors and exciting wordage. We ensure that our viewers are captivated by our website and want to explore more.
Every new season, we change the theme and colors of our website. As of now, we have bright blues with matching white text to simulate this current season.
For every new episode we create, a preview is what the episode is all about. We use information from the interview. You'll get little teasers in there so that our viewers know basically kind of what's happening in that episode. We create a matching title and make a quick link so that they can view the episode from there.
At the bottom of that homepage, you can find a Google survey created by us that any listener can complete. It asks for ways that we can improve in our skill and what we do best. It also provides a way for listeners to recommend a new interviewee for our show. This allows us to understand what our listeners are looking for in our podcasts.
Now, we also provide another way for our listeners to learn more about us and how we met. This is our about us page.
Our podcast is thriving and we have a total of 18 episodes that are separated into two main categories, that being named First Adventure and Second Adventure. Episodes one through six are in the First Adventure, being that we filmed them in our sixth grade year.
Episodes seven through 18 are located in the Second Adventure category. These are our most recent episodes, the episodes that we are filming currently. You can also find every single episode that we have on one single slide page by reviewing each episode separately in each category.
The Graham and Colin Show started with the very first Barrow County Student Technology Competition. We were tasked with creating an innovative technology project and that's just what we did. We got together and filmed the first episode of the Graham and Colin Show, submitted it and we received second place.
Now, this year, we had tried to achieve the first place win and that's just what we did. Improving our episodes, website and project video. Because of this win, we moved on to Regional Technology Competition, where we also received first place.
We then moved over to the Georgia State Student Technology Competition and that is where we won second place. Our experience about this time was absolutely amazing and we feel the need to produce better content overall so that we can get them in.
You will find that both Graham and I are very, very competitive and always like to be the best. This is what we hope for the future of the Graham and Colin Show. Thank you all. I was your host, Graham.
And I was your co-host, Colin.
Bye-bye.
Wow.
Yes, it's true.
Guys, will you be sticking around afterwards and sign autographs?
Well, we were very proud of these students to go to the last saying how proud we are. We had a positive about 130 projects expended this year across the district. And we had, I don't know, about 30 or so go to the state competition. And we're gonna be, as we're gonna be recognizing those students who placed at the state competition last week. But when we looked over the projects and those that we thought were best exemplify what the competition's all about to kind of share with you, we've been interviewing a lot of these students. We immediately felt like that it exemplified so many of the awesome, wonderful projects that we had this year with the competition. But they certainly stood out. I still feel like maybe I'm biased that should've been the first place winner in the state. I can't imagine what that first place project looks like. I actually want to see it to be it. It was better than the column and great, but we are so proud of these students. And if you, if you would, you should just give them one more apple.
Awesome. That's really cool. Yeah. Yeah. And we even had some folks with them too, their parents. We'd like to, we'd like to all stand up too, because we know a lot of supporters, a lot of families. Being interviewed, not the last one, but the one before. And most professional folks I've ever been interviewed by. But that, and the efficiency was amazing. It was just like, we got this time to do it. We set it up, we're done. Do the questions, let's go. It was great. I wish everyone else would follow that model. Great job, guys.
And please go over the website at rep.com.
Absolutely. Yep. Thank you all for coming tonight. Thank you guys so much. Ms. Beck, is anything for us now? Okay. All right. We don't have any clarification or old business. We'll go right into new business. Dr. Lowe, I think your first up?
Yes, there's one additional presentation at my English class.
I'm sorry. Scott didn't want to follow that.
Mesmerized.
Yeah.
Mesmerized.
Thank you for giving me minutes to speak on our English words. Because as our districts grow, I thought it'd be a good time to let you know what we're doing. And I'm excited too, because we're relatively proactive since we can. I don't need to give you all this stuff, but we are in the top 20 districts. We've had it for three years. We're 18, 17 in the total number, what you're seeing before your total number of English learners in each district. Of course, you know, for me, I've just gone with the largest number. Next slide, but we're constantly in that. But what I want to bring to your attention is the fact that in the last three years, we go back and get this data. Guess what? We're number two in the percentage over this three-year term in the state of Georgia in our percentage of growth, this population. So that's bringing with a lot of challenges with it. And wanted to talk to you just a couple of minutes of that slide. So to be more accurate about it, with updated data, we are up 27% this year alone in that particular population. We've had, we're now at about 10% of our total student population. You can see that figure to the right. Another important thing I'm going to tell you about is that since the first day of school of this year, we have, that says 109. I did that slide about two weeks ago. We're at 114 today, all right, before I came in here. Students have never been in a United States school before. We call them newcomers of all ages. If you can just picture 114 children in a school, several classes in school, that's a lot of numbers. So what are we doing about this? Number one, I'm gonna let you know, so you would be aware, it's going on. Our challenge is our, at our newcomers academy, which you saw that video several months ago, the video that we have newcomers. But we've already served 46 students total. This year, right now, they're 37 or not, they're 39. As of today, we added one more this week and one last week to the newcomer at the high school. That's the case. So we're bringing in an additional ESOL teacher because of our ETS earnings into Bassa, which is of course right next door. So we have a full-fledged plan to kind of attack that issue of what we're gonna do with the high school level. Elementary, we've been challenged by these newcomers coming in with absolutely, this is the house. They're one of the schools that's most affected by that. And we are, she mentioned Imagine Learning, invoice being paid. That is a program that we're purchasing with Title III carrier funds, the federal funds. And its main purpose is to help English learners that are sort of little or that are ESOL teachers are challenged with not being able to be there all day for each individual kid to get them what they need. So we're having to come up with a lot of creative and innovative ways to make sure that our entire teacher population is benefited by the additional help that we can provide to them to know how to meet this challenge. And at the middle school level, we have the same issue as the elementary. We don't have any commerce formal program there. So what we are doing is we are also using the Imagine Learning. We have added teachers to three of our middle schools that will help the ESOL population and will help spread that professional assistance to them in the most speakers of the language program. This is just a glimpse, I was gonna tell you, of Imagine Learning. It's a wonderfully highly recommended program. We did a pilot with it back in January, extremely popular. And it scaffolds a home language for a while if a student is not sure what they're doing. It tells them really briefly, give them an answer, tell them in their home language what they're trying to get you to do this. And so it's a wonderful program that we're going to get now for summer use of students. That's what we're gonna rush to use those carrier funds for that. In addition, yeah, we have established a new training program. So in our elevation platform that we have, that used so kindly a year or two ago, approved that funding in our platform elevation, they have new training modules now that we've discovered with. And several of them are how to deal with newcomers, not just the student that's been in the ESOL program for a few years, but they're coming brand new to the country. So they bring emotional, academic needs both at the same time for our school system. So we have a module, we have 12 units to study that each school has been assigned a newcomers expert or contact there. And we'll be training those beginning of the summer intently. And I believe, last slide, this fifth, training through elevation as well. You can't see that real well, but this is the slide of the newcomer training that is particularly for administration purposes. And what are the challenges that these students bring? What additional, so we're being very proactive, I'm pleased to report to you. But we are seeing a big challenge here that just wanted to be aware of that population. Any questions?
How many languages do we currently have spoken in our bar?
The last that we did, we had that on there, it was 29 different ones. And most, a good number of our newcomers are not, the majority's gonna be Spanish. We think we kind of, and we anticipate that. But recently, in Russia, we have Afghan family. It's just moved here, the church is sponsoring and they're registering now. We've got them and Russian and Ukrainian. Speaking of this, we're finally now discussing.
It's a retention with these students. Are they staying at school? Are they persevering?
Yes, we're tracking that because that's very important, particularly when you get to nine, nine, 12 grades. But if you look at this population, whereas we have a certain number of students that will exit the program by their stores, we test them, as you probably recall annually, to see if they're ready to exit the program. So we always lose some and we're gaining many more. But what we're doing is we're approaching the schools that we told to look at that subgroup. And look, we are beginning to measure all of that potential for this thing, not only in school, but are this thing here in Barrow.
Anything else? Great program. We appreciate your effort.
I appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Wait, excuse me, what are? So tonight, I'm here to talk with you all about the Graham and Colin Show. It's for social, emotional and character development. And so our superintendent recommends placing the adoption and purchase of Character Strong program on the table until our next regularly scheduled meeting. But we wanted to go ahead and talk with you all about the program tonight. And we'll even on what we've been talking about and doing so far. So if you get back to earlier this year, you all approved our strategic plan for the next five years. And so one of the goals stated in that strategic plan is that we are gonna ensure all students have access to a safe and positive learning environment, resulting in healthy social development, increased academic outcomes and improved graduation rates. So several of our action steps for that goal and to accomplish that goal were highlighted there on that slide. But the strategic plan was really our push to get us looking into a program to address engagement, belonging and student wellbeing. And so we put together a process here. We're gonna go over these steps tonight and fill you in on what Character Strong is all about. And so we identified a team first and that team put together the process of identifying and evaluating the program that we were gonna have. So we first identified our team and established our team members. We had several administrators with us, teachers, we had an instructional coach, active interventionist counselors and our behavior intervention support coordinator. So you can see there's a whole host of different folks in the room with different expertise. And then our team identified our goals and we reviewed our strategic plan and set criteria for what we were gonna look for in the program. We identified the timeline, when and how we were gonna make decisions. And then we set aside time to get estimates and quotes for this budget cycle. So after we identified the criteria and what we were looking for, kind of non-negotiables and what challenges we had, we got to work looking for um, we got to work looking for programs that serve K through to all students. And so um we found several programs that, that fit that need and decided to demo three of them. And they were Seven Mindsets, Move This World and Character Strong. So we scheduled demos of all three programs. And then uh two of the three gave a school access to a platform for several weeks or months. So we can kind of delve in ourselves and see if we liked um the program. All right, so in the beginning, um, I told you that we had, uh, the first stage was we set uh criteria of what we were looking for. And if that program was going to address the challenges that we thought we may have. And so this is what we created our rubric based on right here. And so the first one was flexibility. And so what we mean by that is how flexible is it to use in the school? Can we do it in five minute chunks? So we have to give a whole hour lesson. Um, we really wanted to make sure that was flexible for all teachers to use. Um, intervention support, we wanted to make sure that the program had tier two and tier three behavior interventions uh for RTI. And so um that was something that was really important to us from the rubric, we want it to be feasible. And what we mean by that is, um, is this something that we're actually going to accomplish? Are we going to have fidelity with it or are folks actually going to do it? Um, we want to be engaging and relatable to all grade levels. You know, sometimes, um, you know, if you're getting good figures, the same thing is kindergarten, so it's really not engaging to them anymore. A bit more with parent communication resources. We felt it was very important that you transparent with our families. And that we had newsletters and things throughout, then weekly and monthly, so they can work with us on the same skills that we're working with our students and speaking the same language. Um, we wanted to make sure that we could easily integrate it into our schools. And if that's important to do it every day and not just a twenty to thirty minute lesson for a counselor once a month. We really wanted these skills to click. Um, we wanted to address bullying and also have professional development support. So the program that touched all of those boxes for us across the board is a character development program called Character Strong. So let's talk about what Character Strong looks like. Um, so they have vertical alignment um pre-K through twelve. And so they have a elementary program called Purposeful People. Um, and there are nine character traits involved in pre-K with the grade. So that's really cool because we can have a character trait of the month. And there are three social emotional skills um to promote, promote, promote to be outcomes. And so those outcomes are wellbeing, engagement and belonging. And so those social emotional skills, they call them be kind, be strong and be well. But what that really is, be kind is emotion regulation, be strong is executive functioning and be well are social skills. So you can see there in um pre-K and kindergarten, we're teaching um emotion regulation by identifying emotions. So we're teaching executive functioning by showing them how to follow directions and social skills. Um, teaching them how to listen, right? And then we go all the different grades, you can see it's vertically aligned. Now we're talking about stress management, goal setting and leadership. Right? Um, and so then we move into the middle school and the high school. And these have the same three outcomes, wellbeing, engagement and belonging. But here the difference is um knowing the difference between knowing and doing. And so for example, you can see that emotions in that first section, uh, if students have knowledge of their emotions and understanding of emotions and how they feel, uh, they'll better be able to regulate their emotions and how they act. And so we're just trying to teach them that connection and the same guys with empathy, compassion, values, purpose, goals and habits and leadership and teamwork. And so again, those outcomes would be wellbeing, engagement and belonging. So um Character Strong, it, you know, checks a lot of our boxes. It's teaching our kids their development, soft skills for when they get off to the workforce. Um, leadership, you know, being a part of the team, uh, having a purpose and goals. And so we're, we're really excited to recommend this program to you all. What questions do you have for me?
When can we start?
We're hoping this could be this year.
So this, this is just six to twelve grades?
Well, if we go back once, why you can see that they really focus on these character traits in those levels as well.
So is this changing, is this taking the place of the being the voice on the bullying?
Yes, we felt like this was addressing bullying prevention with the social skills. And even if they talk about friendship and uh and conflict resolution and things like that. So we're teaching us skills on how to handle that.
So we think this will be a better on the bullying because that's what I'm hearing constantly. This concerning me as I'm out talking to parents and stuff, is that we've had a lot of kids that are now being homeschooled or have even dropped out of school because our bullying has gotten so bad. And it's not just what I would call bullying when we say there's different things to bullying. We're talking to the point of children almost having broken bones. I'm surprised we've not got to that.
This gets to the root of the problem because you can tell kids all day long to be kind, be kind, be kind.
But I want to make sure that we're following through um with what that really is. And, and really, because that's sad that we've got parents having to homeschool or that they're worried that their children are really going to get hurt more bad, that we've got to, you know, what, what can we do is what I'm saying, other than putting that in. What can we do as a system? I mean, do you have any advice for us?
Um, I do think that this program is going to help with helping to build a positive relationship skills and responsibility making and um working, you know, my child is in second grade and she's going well, she's like, we have conflict resolution, we don't really know how to deal with it. And we're going to teach them that, um, it's very interactive and engaging. Um, so it's teaching the kids skills. Um, and while they're doing it every single day, that's really what makes the difference, not the counselor going in and doing one lesson. They really need to see it every single day for it to really make an impact.
I think the biggest issue to Beverly's point is how do we incorporate the parents in, in, in a program like this?
Now, this program does have a lot of character.
Yeah.
English and Spanish. They provide newsletters that you can pull around, send them on to the parents and they get parents activities. There's also activities that they can do on the playground. So some of them have supplies, some of them don't, but they can play games or they can use their PC. Um, so it almost has some things like that with parents as well.
Yeah, I think that's where bullying starts.
Agreed, agreed.
I have several questions. One, um, can we go back to the very first slide when we talked about?
Their first slide.
Yes. Um. Can you define successful restorative practices?
So restorative practices are some of the practices that we are, you know, using at our alternative school. Um, I'm not changing restorative practice. Um, but I do know that that's something that every year intervention is working with alternative schools on. And I think those students uh they have a track and have positive, you know, skills when they come back to transition back to their own school.
The, one of the other questions I have for this is I take it that we are identifying students who need to participate in this? Or is this going to be for everybody? Everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, and so you're going to. I'm, when are you going to actually do this in students day? What is this going to take away from?
So one of the next steps, since you guys approved this, is to meet with our principals and put plans in place. I know that some um principals are already looking, you know, they already are kind of, know this is coming. So they might be um adding that to their schedule next year. But the great thing about Character Strong is it can be done in five, a five minute session each day, so five to twenty minutes. So instead of lumping it into one hour, we can wrap it up throughout the week. So we can fit in a morning meeting or begin the class or before they ask for the day.
Okay, and the, the last question I have is how are you going to track the success of this program? Do you have a rubric that you're using or is this going to be done on an individual child basis or how are we going to do this?
So that's one of the things we're discussing too, is measuring the effectiveness, making sure that we're doing it with fidelity. So we may have some impact, you know, you do a lot of things to make sure that's being done, um, rubrics to make sure it's being done. But we'll also look at our saber, so that's our behavior square. And of course, you know, if it's really successful, it may even, you know, increase our attendance or our behavior issues. And so we can look at that.
And we also track all our behaviors, you know. We track because it's the, the way we do it and the right thing to do. And we also, of course, state reporting, um, which honestly, the past year or two bullying has been down, um, to be perfectly honest. Um, and so I think we need to get back on, we, before COVID, we had gotten a, uh, had been on the subject matter about that. And um, I think we need probably to pick up back, uh, you know, some more education of what bullying actually is. Is it a case of bullying? Is it a case of being mean? Is it a case of being rude? Um, these type of things. Um, and so I think that's something that is definitely, what I've seen is a part of this and something we have focused on really hard in the past and um with all the turmoil that we've been through, we focused on it, but not, not like we have a very good um framework to, to do that and, and, and continue to do it better, from what I've seen.
My concern is, this sounds really good. And I know y'all have spent a lot of time determining what the best program is. But in, in so many things that we do, we go after the best and then we, and then I won't say fails, but it's not as successful as we would like because we don't really track it properly. You see what I'm saying? So I think that, that it's going to be interesting to see how we actually track this so that we can measure progress in the program.
And I, I agree with that. I think um that's one thing I've kind of been, song I've been singing for a while is, you know, we have to bring everything together. We have a lot of great things going on, but sometimes they're different things. So I think this is a great way of bringing that together. So we have one thing to track and, and instead of eighteen different ones.
And I think it's really great to all be speaking to leaders, so it's never changing as students, that changes from one to the other. They've already learned the same stuff.
Yep, and that's important with our.
To Lynn's point, it's, I think this is one of the most important things to track because even if bullying is down and that's great, it still doesn't change the fact that yeah, adolescent suicide is the second leading cause of death. So this is the most, one of the most important things we need to be talking about during our children's day. And it is absolutely imperative that we.
It is, and it's, you know, in recovery and, you know, it's, I think one of the real things that, that we're struggling with, and this isn't just Barrow County, this is really national.
National.
At this point, is the fact that, you know, when we were in school, you know, I got picked on some. I, I remember it, still remember some of those people. But you had, you know, you went home and you had your friends in the neighborhood, you were at home, you know, your, your ball team, whatever. You got away from it. And these things right here have amplified it to no end. These kids, if parents aren't watching them on, on these things, they're the cyber bullying and the things that carry on. You, they just, it doesn't stop. And, and, you know, that's a really hard thing for us to deal with, um, except through educational things like this. And, and this is, I saw some of that in here too, and that's a huge piece.
It starts at school, but then it kind of sort of maybe we can.
A lot of times it starts on Instagram and comes to school.
And we can't.
And like when I was in school, you could run to your, and then you'd have seven day or whatever.
Yeah, you had the weekend.
These kids cannot because they have, you know, that.
Absolutely, it's a huge, huge societal problem.
Get away with it. And then somebody told me that it was maybe ten years ago, a child was a, Yorga, he was one of those students over there, a ten year old, committed suicide. And he had a friend that was on the MT that had to go out to that home and deal with that family that it happened to. So these are things that are real, that are going on.
We've all, unfortunately, I've been in this business for any length of time, I tell all of it. And um, and you know, I remember again in high school, it was a young man that lived, he was a grade older than I was, lived behind me. You know, committed to a side and that was part of it back then too. And you know, it, um, yeah, I've always often said too, if, if it's, if, if adults could have fixed this problems in society totally would have been fixed a long time ago. Um, it's getting the kids to understand what it is, how it affects others and those type of things. That, that's really the hard part of it.
This seems a lot more educational. I think kids these days, the way they learn.
Yep.
I think even with my own son, I see you guys teaching them a lot more about the whys. Kids seem to want to know more about the whys. And this program seems to get a lot more about the, the whys. It's not just be kind, it's why. There's a lot more of a why, I think this program will be a lot more beneficial.
Where, you know, there are different types of bullying. There, you know, there's the physical, there's the emotional, there's the ostracizing. There's, I mean, there, it's a very complex thing. And, and you know, it's, it's easy to say bully, 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 but it's really much more. I mean, there are college courses that you can take that go into, you know, just in, Dr. I've took one or two. And I'm sure our counselors have taken many more, but it's, you know, there's everything from your physical victims to your proactive victims. Some that seek it out for attention, which nobody ever wants to hear that. But it, it is a, it's, it's a fact, it, it, they're up, it happens. And it's just a very, very complex, but just like everything else, education and, and doing it the right way is the way to, to, to make it better.
Right.
I think, everything I've seen, this is, this is, I mean, nothing's perfect. Um, but I do like the fact again, that we're able to track it a lot better and keep up with, with how well it's doing.
I think that if you said bullying, when I heard in the, you know, I was in school with not the physical. So when I was hearing the physical, I was like, whoa, then that.
But that's what a lot of people, boys will think. I got beat up, you know, that's the bully, that was the bully we dealt with. I got beat up with, you know, on the playground.
When I was hearing that, I was like, whoa, that's definitely.
Well, thank you for your research, we appreciate all your efforts.
Yeah, this is great, thank you.
We'll put this on the, uh, out for review and discuss it again next time. Thank you. Dr. Wood.
Good evening. So I have the pleasure tonight to uh ask for the superintendent to recommend some new courses for our CTAE classes. Um, we, uh, they are listed for you there. So we'd like to begin offering these dearly approved courses for students at the high school. Um, they go through the level of, of coming to sort of a request at the, maybe the student level or the school need level, that goes through the school governance team and then onto superintendent and the board to make these recommendations. Um, so you can see that at Appalachia, we would like to add a sports marketing pathway, which falls under marketing. Um, at all three schools, we'd like to offer a, what we're going to consider a fourth level, sort of capstone course for our ACT, our ACT students. So right now, our ACT students have several pathways they can take. And adding this cooperative agribusiness sales and marketing will allow them sort of a fourth level course uh so that they can uh continue to work with their ACT teachers and hopefully get out into the community working on either actual internships, paid, uh, paid positions. Um, we are offering a public management and administration pathway, which is a new pathway offered at the state level. Um, it also serves a dual purpose. So students in this pathway will not only get CTAE credits, but they'll also get social studies credit. Um, and so BASSA will start with that pathway next year. Um, you can see unmanned aircraft drone, which is just a new thing. We're going to see where that takes us. We don't know a lot about it, we've had some uh small sessions on that. And information supporting services out of the IT pathway, digital electronics, which falls into the manufacturing pathway. Um, and then uh Winer Bear will also add that uh ag cooperative business. Uh, and at this time, there's no financial impact. We have teachers to uh teach all of these classes. Um, and there are no additional funds needed. Um, CTAE will cover any of those associated costs down the road.
Oh, that's good.
I know, you like that, oh, yes.
We could see it.
Yes. Any questions about, yes?
Did the pathways under, for BASSA, did the pathways fall under the back, the four magnet programs or?
Yes, so these fall under, a lot of these will fall under what they have for their STEM, for their science, technology, engineering programs. So that's kind of where they're fitting them, sort of the uh IT pathways, the drone pathway, on the drone course, actually the whole pathway.
Anything else? Consent agenda? Thank you very much. Dr. Darby.
Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Michael. Annually, we uh review the code of conduct and we do that typically in the months of January, February. And um as for uh board's statement rule and our local fair policy that falls into that. And then our governance process that we have in place, our charter system, we ask that our school governance teams, administrative teams to review this uh here in those months of January, February each year. Um, and ask for revisions and potential changes. Uh, this year, I'm, uh, probably say that we didn't have any suggested changes or revisions. glad the crowd said that we didn't have any suggested changes or revisions. And we're asking the superintendent, the board, uh, to accept our, um, S Y twenty-three, um, Barrow County Code of Conduct. Questions that I can answer with that?
Nobody had any additions or subtractions?
Even ask three times? I was thinking the same thing, really.
Yes, okay. And you, Dr. Green?
Okay. Um, we are bringing to a small policy revision to policy J C D on student conduct. Uh, we just want to add a paragraph at the bottom of this, uh, policy, uh, in order to comply with, um, state law twenty dash two dash seven fifty-one point six. And so the language that we're recommending adding to the board policy is taken straight out of the law. Uh, and it's related to particular certain behaviors that happen on a school bus, requiring that a parent of the student involved in, in, um, those particular activities and the representative from our school system gets together to develop a, uh, contract for, um, the student involved in those behaviors. And so we're just adding recommending that we place policy J C D on student conduct on the table until the next regularly scheduled meeting so that our community can have an opportunity to check with that and offer any public input. In this particular case, we're just taking a section out of the law and putting it into our policy. Do you have any questions that I can answer?
Um, I'm a little bit concerned that I realize this is what the state says we need to put in here. But there's nothing that, we talked about suspension from riding the bus, but it doesn't say anything about, um, expulsion from being able to be on a bus. And there may be, uh, instances where we need to be able to say, that's it, you done.
It says shall not be, it says include, but shall not be limited to. So not be limited to means, I guess we could do more, right?
Right, but it would be
I think the type of assault or battery would dictate then if it went to the next level. Yeah. Yeah, we're in society.
This is actually just adding the requirement developing a contract. It talks about in addition to any other correct action imposed. So we would deal with the behavior according to our code of conduct. And then in addition to that, we would put together this, uh, required contract. So I, I would not interpret that to suggest that we
So this is, this is basically just saying we need a contract that the parent needs to sign, saying that this behavior will not be tolerated.
It's interesting.
Okay.
It's a, it's a step in that process. But if it's something that's too far over the top and we, we have always done, well, we've done it past several years anyway, you know, fighting especially at a certain level. Um, that's just too dangerous to, to allow on buses. But this is a step we have to put in.
And the parents have to sign that.
They have to be offered it, you know, they, if they've signed it or not. We can't force them, but yeah.
Yeah, what the law is, you know, saying here is that we, um, in, in these particular incidents, after we address it with the appropriate repercussions, which is what we call consequences, fundamentals, but that we would then also build a contract to make sure that we put them on notice essentially that this behavior cannot happen again. And this, I'm not exactly sure that I can try to explain to you what was in legislators' minds when they put this in the law, but it is taken straight out of the first law.
This part of that paperwork, we get them at the end of the year, shows all the opposite.
It is. It's just another piece we have to follow.
Consent agenda? Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Burnout?
Got several items here. The first is a request from the county for sewer easement. Auburn Elementary School. So we're asking the superintendent to have that approval for temporary construction easement. Twenty foot permanent utility easement back Auburn Elementary School. Just for gravity, that sewer line. And, uh, this is to improve their infrastructure, uh, in, in Auburn area. The financial effects of us and, uh, review the pathway there. See anything, uh, of concern?
Questions? Consent agenda? Thank you, sir.
Next item is for visual, uh, board materials, purchase and installation in our middle schools. We're asking the superintendent to recommend the purchase and installation of whiteboards for thirty-nine middle school math classrooms, storage products and equipment. And the amount of seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars for whiteboards installation. Ms. Baldwin worked together with her maintenance department to, like, prices for boards and installation. And she put a great deal of time and effort into that. I appreciate all she did to help with that piece there. The financial impact, uh, as I mentioned, seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars to be funded through our funds. This work would be scheduled to be done this summer in, in our middle schools, uh, just giving them, um, the math programs, um, a much better opportunity to, uh, teach the kids and, um, up level learn. So, you know, if there are specific questions about the curriculum side of this, I'll answer that. As our, our recommendation.
So these are special whiteboards, three hundred and sixty degree map, uh, read down there?
It, it's a standard whiteboard that we put up, you know, in new school, for example. It's just they're on each one.
Okay.
They may, they may even take downs both.
So it's thirty-nine math classrooms, but it's really thirty-nine times four whiteboards?
Uh, the number of boards. Uh, and they're different sizes too. There's twenty four by eight boards, forty-two, four by tens, three, four by twelve, and then forty-nine by sixteen.
That seems expensive when you first look at it, but then when you read that, it's a lot of horse.
You know, it, it's just trying to take advantage of all that little wall space that they have. And that's why they have to go with different sizes. Some you can get bigger on, and other walls, you know, like the small one there.
Consent agenda? Next?
Okay. Resting superintendent recommended guaranteed maximum five hundred thousand dollars to improve agriculture facilities in the district. In November last year, you all recall, we had, uh, you all approved Charles Black instructions to be our construction manager for non-state funding projects. Projects in excess of twenty-five thousand dollars. So we're going to bring this back to your force, uh, for your approval. So that's what this is. Um, these are just must needed improvements at, at our two farms. One on Highway eighty-one and the other one on Highway fifty-three, the conservation property that we got out there. And it's just for a number of things. And it's going to be a little bit different at Highway eighty-one property as this for the, uh, Highway fifty-three property. So this is just going to help us to kind of capture a lot of things that it's, it really needs to be addressed sometime at these locations.
Questions? Consent agenda? Okay.
Hey, I'm going to ask our regular maintenance, great web to speak on the snake side.
Good evening. In a minute, since I've seen you guys, so, well, glad to be back and glad to have a chance to come up here again. Uh, this is a little small contract for pressure washing in all of our schools. We, um, put out an ad in the Georgia Prejudice Registry to see how many folks will come be interested in pressure washing. And sixteen people showed up to the brick proposal conference, which was a whole lot more than we expected. We had five people respond to it. Uh, she had a copy of the results. We had three vendors that were within just a few hundred dollars of each other on the base amount of pressure wash set areas at each school. We get to the map of the school, we're certain the square footage is supposed to pressure wash, then you put curves uh, all the homes in the front. And so they provide a price. The difference we get was in the, uh, extra cost. We asked them to provide unit costs so that we could do work throughout the year with them on top of what we wanted to do this summer. And we wanted to have a set price when they came back to do the work. So we assigned the, their unit costs to some set square foot usage. I, I just made up. I took five schools and said that we did do fifteen hundred more square feet of sidewalk and say seven hundred and fifty feet of curb at five different locations and add those up and based off the unit cost. We, uh, recommended a company called Stone Wall Services out of Athens that did work. Their, their logo, we had another local company, Crystal Clear, that was second and then nobody, which is a great name for, and you came in third. All, all very close and there's probably a possibility that we work with them at some point throughout the term of the contract.
But we have never used them before, right?
Correct.
Okay. Do we get, have we talked to other people who have used them?
Yes.
Okay.
Any questions? Thank you, sir. Houston, back seats.
All right. Um, if it's okay with you, we're going to go over the general fund budget. I'm not going to go into detail. I had to on Wednesday, just kind of a brief overview. So Suzanne, if you can click the one that says, um, highlights. Yeah. Okay. Uh, so this is just, just to give you a quick recap of our general fund budget. Um, as always, the, uh, the decisions will focus on our mission and mission, vision, fully committed to student success, mission, ensuring exceptional education that leads each student to have a high achieving and responsible citizen. And our focus is building our leaders differently. And of course, we also make sure any decisions will support our strategic plan. Uh, academics and student success, elevating the teaching profession, communication and culture, and high school infrastructure. Um, these are our major guidelines and goals. I will read them to you that they're there for you. We went through a month, I'm saying, right? Our process always starts at zero based budgeting. I review, review staffing allotments with departments and schools, submission of budgets from all departments, review of budgets by business services, reviewed by executive cabinet, and then we present board approval, which is about a billion. Our revenue assumptions, our property tax digest, an increase of ten point three percent compared to the prior year budget. Our military rate remains at eighteen point five mil. So assuming that our military is going to remain at eighteen point five mil. Uh, Q B E funding increases three point seven million over the fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget. According to our Kent, there will be no austerity reductions or state cuts this year for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Our T A B T, T A B T tax or our, our tax will increase, um, one point five million, we believe. And our midterm Q B E adjustment budgeted at five hundred thousand. And of course, our interest rates are down, so we're budgeting less for interest. Our overall budgeted revenues look like this. So, um, we're budgeting a hundred and fifty-five million, one hundred and fifty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars. And that has an increase of ten million, four hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and seven dollars from the prior year budget. For our expenditures, um, this is the new format, by the way. I'm, I'm catching up with what everybody else is doing. And so Shelly, I think you're not how long she updated it. So it's the same information, just it looks a lot cleaner and historical. Um, state required benefits, uh, are, these are our state mandates. Our teacher retirement system, employer share increase of point seventeen percent. So our T R S for the employer side is from nineteen point eight one to nineteen point nine eight. So that increases to about a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars for us. The total general fund cost per, uh, T R S or pension plan is seventeen million dollars. Our classified health insurance will not have an increase, but the cost of the general fund is sixteen point one million for twenty twenty-three. Our, uh, the total budget for health and T R S, those are two things that we can't, you know, change. We have to do what the state has to do, so we bring one million dollars. And then also they have hospital one point six is parental leave. Um, they get three weeks if you have a child or your spouse has a child, or I think it's even adoption. So the cost to us is about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year, which should have about fifty individuals for the past couple of years who have, who have been able to take advantage of this. Our investment in faculty and staff, our, um, annual levels. So if you're eligible for a staff increase, um, we have that available, one million, five hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars, including benefit and benefits for eligible certified and classified employees per their applicable salary scale. The governor, um, two thousand dollar increase in the state salary schedule for teachers. That's going to total two million, um, nine hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred and forty-seven dollars in free benefits. We're adding forty net teaching positions, one shared instructional coach for A and BASSA. Extended year for the act teachers, an additional ten days, reading and writing materials, textbooks for growth and replacement, math manipulatives, high school science and math supplies, and fine arts supplies for our band, for some art. For our academic support, we're going to, um, fund the tab, tablet, tablet, tablet. Data analytics tool, uh, grade six through twelve math content specialist, a BASSA A and administrator, H R recruitment and induction coordinator, chromebook cards for high school, and future elementary school principal opening for fall twenty twenty-three. That's a half year, um, for a, a principal to open that school. For our investment in student health, we're going to add three more counselors, one guidance clerk, and additional security cameras. For our investment in operation, um, technology backup solution for maintenance, um, they have a significant escalation in labor, material, fuel, and energy costs. Transportation has increased in fuel costs, uh, reorganizing our payroll and added financial software support. Uh, a transit ban for technology, increased insurance costs and contracts with outside organizations. So our overall budgeted expenditures at this point is a hundred and fifty-five million, three hundred and fifty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars. So, um, you take our tentative budget revenue, subtract the expenditures, we're at a two hundred and one thousand, fifty-eight dollar deficit or a net loss for the year. As we like to always remind you, the eighty-six point six percent of our budget is salaries and benefits. So our tentative budgeted revenues, as I said, a hundred and fifty-five million, one hundred and fifty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-three. Our budgeted expenditures, a hundred and fifty-five million, three hundred and fifty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-one. We take our fund balance at the end of this year, twenty twenty-two, beginning of twenty twenty-three is going to be forty-five million. So we're going to have to use two hundred and one thousand, fifty-eight dollars out of those reserves for a predicted budget ending fund balance. Forty-four million, seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and forty-two. And again, I didn't correct it this year, twenty-two, it should be twenty-three. And all these actual figures are not available at the time for the fund balance. This is just a prediction of our fund balance. All right. So then we gave you some items to consider, the words to consider. So the first one was, um, the state is adding two thousand to the, uh, teacher salary scale. Uh, we asked if you wanted to do an additional two thousand to the local supplement for all certified staff. That total cost was two million, nine hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred and forty-seven dollars. We also talked about an increase in starting salary for entry level non-certified support staff. This is grades three through eleven. It includes our paraproses and our clerks, so they could get an increase. Um, total cost to do that is a hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four. And we also talked about a four percent increase for all non-certified staff. Total cost of that, six hundred and ninety-one thousand, three hundred and sixty-five. And the last thing we talked about, excuse me, was twenty-five thousand dollars per year for three years requested by the tax assessor. You all agreed to all of that except for the tax assessor at this point? Is that correct? So right now our tentative fund budgeted revenues didn't change, a hundred and fifty-five million, one hundred and fifty-four thousand, twenty-three. Our expenditures from the prior slide, a hundred and fifty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty- Our expenditures from the prior slide, a hundred and fifty five thousand, four hundred and thirty five. The beginning fund balance, forty five million. So we had an initial net loss of two hundred and one thousand. So the additional items approved by the board was two thousand dollar increase, two point nine million. Salary increase, increase in grade three through eleven, eight hundred and forty three thousand. Four percent increase for the classified staff, six hundred and ninety one thousand. So our budgeted ending fund balance fiscal year twenty twenty three will be the third forty million, three hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and six. Our next steps are that we will vote on the tentative budget next week, May third. Vote on the tentative budget of other funds, June seventh. We'll hold public hearings, June thirteenth, June sixteenth. And then we'll vote on final budgets to be announced, but we're hoping that, we're hoping that that will happen on the last word, work, of course, work session for January.
Which is the twenty first, I want to clarify. I think we had a little confused, I was a little confused at our last meeting, twenty first, right?
So is there any discussion? Anyone talk about?
The only question that I have that came up since then is because it was brought up to me by somebody, uh, boy, actually. Do we have a cost for a? And you may not tonight, that's fine. On what, when you mentioned the extra transportation cost for fuel?
Four hundred thousand dollars.
But I'm saying, how much of that do we know? How much maybe because we have employees driving their buses out of county, um? Do we have any idea?
Shouldn't have any of that.
We shouldn't have any. Because I was told that we have some that are.
If you don't mind, just give the doctor a break about that.
Yeah, if so, we've got a report on that. We need to handle that as a personnel issue because that's not something we do. Now, there are buses that go out of the district every day for MVP, for homework, and a lot of other things. And sometimes people get those things confused, so.
The only comment I'm gonna make about this is that we have some of the absolute best staff and teachers in the world. I'll put our people up against anybody.
Absolutely.
And that has been deliberate in our hiring processes. And we are, because we have so many, well, because our tax basis basically flipped, we should have sixty to seventy percent commercial, industrial, thirty, forty percent residential, and we don't, we have the exact opposite of that. It's difficult for us to do pay increases, but I honestly feel like this is just necessary. We've got to give our teachers raises in order to continue to be somewhat competitive with everybody around us. But mainly because they deserve it, they deserve.
They work hard, they deserve every penny of it, they do, and so, you know.
Can't have retention if you don't pay them a stretch.
Well, the good thing is, these increases take us just above the average, which we have been below. So we definitely are making some progress. Are we comfortable with the progress?
And we still did it without raising our mill rate, which we have not done in how many years?
Seventeen.
Seventeen years. Let the record show.
And with, as Ms. Stevens said, dealing with the challenges of an invert, basically an inverted tax base is what it comes down to.
Which some of our neighboring counties do not have.
And, you know, a lot, several of our neighboring companies have a bond on top of their mill rate. We've never done that.
Right.
So there are a lot of variables. Yeah, I mean, I'd love to push that on up, but I think.
Well, I hope that the industrial base changes.
I think it is.
It is changing thanks to our economic development department at Barrow County.
So if we can, what I, what I'm saying is I'd like to see us do this this year. I know it takes money out of reserves, but I'm comfortable with the reserve level that we have at this point. And hopefully we'll be able to see an increase in the industrial based tax rates and be able to do more in the next couple of years.
Oh, yeah, and also want to mention and give a shout out to our planning and personnel department because they have every year now gone back and looked at the scales and balanced them and moved things up in certain areas where they need, you know, closer to where they need to be. It's a yearly process and ongoing. But we haven't just let it, they haven't just let that stay stagnant every year like my years past, you know. So that, that part has, you know, there've been some tweaks here and there also that have increased salaries and ranges and their type of things, such as the, the ask on for grades three through eleven, those type of things. So we've been doing a lot of those things as we can in spite of the limitations we have when it comes to funding. Because we act that, absolutely, our people are, y'all have heard me say it, ad nauseam, it's a people business. We've got to take care of our people first. And it's been, you know, recession's been, the recession was tough and we're, you know, we are still paying, so to speak, for some of what we, we needed to do during the great recession. And it's just now starting to come out. And of course, COVID and everything else kind of stopped it, didn't, didn't stop it totally, but it slowed it a little bit. And now we're seeing a good piece where we can move up and do what we need to do for our folks. And, you know, I just, you know, put it out there too, on behalf of everyone, thank all of our staff members for what they do and being bearable and sticking with us and putting kids first. And you're not gonna, you're right, you're not gonna find a better bunch of folks in, in any business or in education. I'll put them up against anyone. They just put their heads down, get the job done, and take care of our kids and our community. And, and we're seeing the benefits that our community's improving. And a lot of that goes to the, what the students that we're turning out are coming back and they're working in the community and their parents are here and they're supporting and people are moving into the community because of those things. So it's, you know, it's a cyclic, cyclic thing. It's very, it's great to see it all coming together and getting better and better. I think we all wish it could be a little quicker when it comes to that, that point. I know I definitely do.
How are we doing now, are we comparing financially with other counties around us on our paper? Like, like on the transportation professor, I was on this, as well as, as we know, we have a problem getting them, as maintaining them, as well as.
Transportation, we're really towards, have been towards the top of it, to me, correct me if I'm wrong. But we've been very competitive in that area for a while. We bumped those up.
And it looks at that yearly. And actually, when I do the school food nutrition or the other funds, school food nutrition is actually growing up too. So we're trying to get about twelve dollars an hour thresholds, trying to get about that amount as I'm paid. Say it that way, but just trying to get those lower levels up a little bit. Is that appropriate, Sam?
So we're comparing with other counties.
Oh, yeah.
We're not losing them to other counties to go.
Yeah, we, we see a little bit of that for pay, but again, our teachers, the ones that we see usually, the attrition we do see is for different reasons. There's a, there's a handful of that, of course, and there's always, always going to be. But, you know, it's, the kind of the, really, the pay thing comes in is when people, the spouse gets transferred to a better paying job and, you know, those type of things. And, but, so it's not, I mean, it's definitely on top of all of our minds because it's, and we work, we work to live, not live to work. But, but it's, again, you know, I think we are coming to a point, I think, and when I say we, it's more the royal we. It's, is a national thing. We, we sometimes think that, you know, because teachers are called to do what they do, maybe we pay them a little less. And I think I've never thought that was the right way to go, and it's not a good, good thing to do. And I think we're coming to a realization with that, as we are in a lot of other areas, that, you know, that's not the way we need to legislate and do these type of things anymore. But, you know, change is always a process and it's, it's definitely got it rocked in the road.
Just to put some closure on that tax assessor ask, we pay them a two and a half percent collection fee, right? Of the total that they collect?
Yes, sir. We pay the tax, the tax commissioner takes two and a half percent out of all of the, the funds that they give us. Before they get the check, they take two and a half percent.
So in essence, as they improve their process or the program that he wants to put in place, we'll actually be paying for that anyways in the percentage that they take.
Exactly. So I don't see paying them seventy five thousand dollars in addition to that.
Yeah.
How much, Jennifer, this doesn't have to be correct, but how much did we collect from the county in sales tax last year? Oh, I mean, property taxes last year or from all sources, do you know?
I think it's about fifty million.
Fifty seven, is that right?
Fifty seven million.
With T A B T tax.
No, that's T B.
Awesome, well, that would be included, yes, sir. So I'll get to you, but I'm not making it.
Okay, well, two and a half percent of fifty seven million dollars ought to be able to fund whatever they need.
Well, it's gonna increase if they improve their budgets through the audit that they want to do. They're gonna make a two and a half percent pace for that.
Right.
Yeah, I'm sympathetic with it, but, you know, but there are a lot of things I'd love to have some help paying for too. But we do what we do and we get it done, so.
I'd much rather.
We talked about this three point five million dollar number, right? So three million dollars in additional, right, two and a half percent, three million, seventy five.
Fine, three point five million dollars.
For us to break even.
Improvement in accounts.
Yeah, sir.
That's a lot of things.
And there's no guarantee.
Okay, so we've been at the bed.
Unless anybody wants to fight for it, I don't.
One million, four hundred and twenty five thousand dollars is two and a half percent, fifty seven million dollars. So.
Should be able to get it closed. Okay.
Are we happy with the raises?
Yes.
Yes, definitely.
Sorry, we can't do that.
We can come back in December and talk about maybe another.
Right, yeah.
If this is my time stop adjustment and things are looking good still.
Right.
Maybe school also be good to us for the rest of the year.
We've been, we've been able to do that past few years, and I think that that's been a huge help and definitely would, would suggest that.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, finally, Dr. Mike, I think you're gonna talk about.
We had a board training several weeks ago now. One of the things that we've been very proud of with the past, really, six years now, I think, I think five times out of the six, there was one year that was, it wasn't awarded, but this board has been an exemplary board, which is the top recognition given to school boards in the state of Georgia. And part of that, going forward, let's see, Suzanne, if you would bring up the piece that has the, the chart. Find that one. And these are the different achievement levels, and I know y'all have seen this before, but quality board, distinguished board, exemplary board. But we've been exemplary board now for really six years. And so it has, you know, you have the strategic planning piece, the Georgia Vision Project, and slide down. There was a piece that was added for this year, and this, this is this piece right here. The governance team has established, formally adopted, and abides by written governance team board norms and protocols. So we went through a training with that several weeks ago. And with the majority board, there were a couple that couldn't be here for different reasons. And the group that was here came up with that listing, and you all have seen that, you have it, it's also here, if you want to take a look at it. So I think really the recommendation would be to go ahead and adopt those and so we can turn in and secure the, I think that's probably the last piece at this point. We need to, to secure the exemplary board status again for, for this school board for next year. So that, that piece is on there, and it would be one that would be, those board norms and protocols. Every year in January, you all kind of reaffirm our strategic plan commitment or your code of conduct commitments and those type of things. This would be something we would add on. These could, of course, be changed. Every year could be, you know, looked at and those type of things. But we would ask that every year, that'd be one of the things we would add to that annual sign off, if you will, that the board does.
Consent agenda?
I know, actually, I have an issue. Yes, because I've talked to people in my district and they're all, every one of the three precincts of this district, for every last one of them has a problem with, if they have a concern and they order to me, and I'm supposed to order to superintendent or the chair to respond, especially those that have served their country, such as my husband, and others who are retired from the military, to give that right as a representative. They had, some of them have fought and been willing to die for our country. And they said they have a problem with any board member or anybody that has, gives that right to, over to a, somebody who is not elected to represent. So I'm standing up for every one of them, and I will not do that. And I've been legislatively have the responsibility, not only by the state, but the federal government to represent the people in my district, and will do so. So I will not advise that if the board decides to put that one clause in there.
Bring up the.
Okay, can we look at the clause that Beverly's talking about? Because I have a problem with that too. Those two, communication, maybe? I'm a little bit. Go down a little bit more. Well, that's it. Oh, any, it's, it's under communication among board members. Any communication from concerned constituent should be forwarded immediately to the superintendent and copied to the board chair. When all member, board members receive an email, the board chair will reply, including the superintendent on the thread, and inform the constituent that the superintendent will respond to the inquiry and request. The part I have a problem with is that last bullet, because if we all get an email, we don't necessarily know what district the constituent is in. And what I have done for decades is to simply respond to say, thank you for your email. We will address this, I'm forwarding this to the superintendent, okay? More response. And to me, that needs to be said anytime we get an email addressed to any of us.
The purpose of that bullet, I think it was you and I and somebody else toward, was to keep seven of us, nine of us, right, responding in a redundant manner.
Right.
It was to make it a consistent formal approach so that that person didn't get different responses from different people.
What I'm saying though is we should all have the same response, basically, is that we received it, that's just courtesy. We received the email, we want this issue addressed and we're forwarding this to the superintendent. And then that's all we have to say.
And I think the key word here was when all board members, so when we all get one mass email.
Right.
I think that was what I understood.
What I was over the discussion.
Right, and the bullet before.
Because, you know, sometimes we look at our emails and we can tell that we all got one email versus us all responding to it all, you know, then.
And some people don't get on their emails quickly.
Right, but I didn't really understand it, that it meant that I wasn't allowed to respond.
That's what it says, is what it says, the one before.
With all board members.
Any commitment, the one before it says, any communication from certain constituents should be forwarded immediately to the superintendent and copied to the board chair. The bullet before it.
Yeah, but it doesn't say that.
Doesn't say that you can't.
Well, the other one, the next one that she's talking about, now, I have always, if there's an issue and I don't know what the situation was and it needs to go to the superintendent, I give it to them anyhow. But the concern that Bill says, oh, if they copy all of us and we give them six or seven different answers, if we're telling them, if we found out what the answer is, we shouldn't be giving them.
Beverly, what would you like for it to say?
If it's the truth.
What would you like for it to say? I mean, I just want to understand what.
If it's the truth, we shouldn't be giving them six or seven different answers.
If it's the truth.
And if we, if we found out the answer.
How would you like to revise it?
To revise.
I'd just like it stricken from there. We shouldn't be forwarding it to the superintendent or the chair to answer our constituents. We were elected to do a job. We were elected to do a job.
That's what I'm saying. I would just like that, that.
I think it's a clarification matter because I actually do not read this as, I mean, and I, I'm, so I'm in agreement, just so we're clear. I'm in agreement with you, but I don't read it the way you read. Like, if, if some, if one of, if one of my constituents or frankly, anybody sends me an email and I want to reply to it, I think we have the, I think we have the right to reply to it. I don't think that can be legislated away. And I don't think that's what this says.
It is saying we will reply and we will copy them and we are saying the superintendent will get back to you.
I feel like this is a
Putting him on the line. That's what I always thought. That is basically putting you on the spot.
Now, there's a lot, most of the time, Dr. Michael knows, I'm saying I'm forwarding this to you. This is in your lane or, you know, I ask him, who should this go to? I don't know. But I'm not gonna give that responsibility. I'm just like, I have, don't have the right to answer my constituents.
I don't read that either, but, you know, it can definitely be rewarded. When all board members receive an email, the board chair will reply, including superintendent on the thread, inform the constituent that the superintendent will respond. I mean, it says right there, we're gonna inform the constituent. I mean, it, it literally says that we're gonna reply, is it not?
Well, it says we're gonna tell them that, that we're sending the superintendent and he'll tell them.
So, what would the harm be in just striking that last bullet for them?
Yeah.
Well, to me, the point of it is, you guys came up with it, but to me, the point of it is, uh, if we all get copied on the same, I think it's a matter of efficiency and professionalism for us not to each, to get nine responses back to, to one person. Now, of course, there are times that it's very obvious that it went to everybody. And there are other times that they sent you one, they sent you one, you know, it's the same message. We can't.
And we don't know.
Again, not every responses, which is, which is right. So, so could it, could it just be as simple as we're all copied? Because I, 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 I mean, if we're all copied, I think this is the proper way to go about it.
The whole purpose was to improve the efficiency and make sure that we were communicating in time and effective manner. It wasn't meant to be a slight. It wasn't meant to be, we don't want you to talk to your constituents. That wasn't the purpose. When it was very positive and we voted on it eight to nothing, that we were during the meeting, we all voted for it. It wasn't meant to be a negative. It wasn't meant to be, we're taking this piece away from you. It was meant to improve the efficiencies of the communicate.
I'm just saying, again.
I don't see where it says you can't talk to your constituents.
The, the part about efficiency, okay? Um, efficient for who? It's efficient for the school board members that we just have one person responding.
Constituent too, because they're gonna get immediate response.
But again, I go back to, well, I respond to mine slightly.
They weren't getting immediate response during COVID because I was, I was getting return emails and phone calls for fifteen hours one day. And I was told all over the county, Ms. Kelly, you're the only one responding to this.
Well, that's not true because I responded.
You told me that a year ago. I said, tell me who I didn't respond to.
Do you think I still have those emails?
Okay, well, here, here's, here's the other thing too, that I have a concern about is some of our folks don't know who their rep is. They just know there's a school board. So, they send the, the message to everybody. We don't know unless we look at the voter list if they're in our district.
Right.
But I intend to respond to everybody in my district and actually, if anybody sends me an email, I'm gonna do that too.
It's fine. If somebody, if somebody needs help, I'm gonna help.
Well, I think, and I think too, and just remembering what, uh, maybe what I have on my head. Trainer from GSBA said, you know, it, it goes back to the, I don't think there's anything in here that go, that's much different from what's in your code of conduct or our policies. And then, and our policies and, and goes back to the, the idea too, that, you know, Board of Education, single members, while they have a duty to their constituents, power's in the board as a whole and not as, as single people. Um, you know, that type of thing. And I think that is where some of this gets tied up into also.
Well, and again.
But in the code of conduct that he told me it was in there.
Kind of what I heard.
In the, in the code of conduct, he told me it was actually in there about the phone calls. I actually finally found it. And it's not in the code of conduct.
What harm would it be in just taking out that last bullet?
I'm, I'm a little bit more concerned about the fact that Beverly wasn't here. And what happened during that day was not bad and clearly something
I lost in translation.
Got lost in translation with her.
Because it was
Yeah, and
Lynn, you were there and you agreed.
You agree, yeah, and now you don't agree, which makes me think.
Then, I just
Well, you didn't say you didn't agree with it.
Oh, yes, I did. Yes, ma'am, we'll go back and look at that case. Um, because I didn't agree with it then and I don't agree with it now because I don't think it needs to be in there it says what it says. And we voted on it eight to nothing, so.
Well, why did you vote in a closed session of the board in the first? I don't understand that.
Okay, let's change the term vote.
Okay.
And to be, also be very clear, it wasn't a closed.
Played to the picture of the, uh, thing that you told me was supposed to be meeting and wanted to post the meeting. You took a snapshot where we posted.
Posted right here. You can pull it up right now and look at it.
It wasn't posted.
Well, I'm, I'm afraid you're mistaken.
The work session was posted, but it wasn't, it was a training session, but it wasn't posted. He's got a picture, so.
Well, what we can do is pull this out and have a vote on this.
Yeah, I think that's what you're gonna have to do.
And take it the way it is.
Again, what, what harm could it do to just not have that in there? That last bullet?
Yeah, I just hate that Beverly was, was made to be upset about that because that was just unnecessary.
The, the problem, I mean, I, 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 to be honest, I'm kind of neutral on the bullet. The reason I don't want to delete the bullet is because we went through a process. There are eight, you know, there were eight people here. I, I mean, like, if we don't, if, if we don't do it that way, I don't know. I think we need to hold ourselves to a, to a standard of the process that we went through that. We agreed to it. We worked on it as a team. We, I, I mean,
That's my
It is my opinion. You said you're not gonna abide by it. I, I don't, I don't think it's a conflict with what you want to do.
I don't either. I think you're within your right to do exactly what you're saying. I, I think one hundred percent.
I think it's
You were made to feel that way. I really do. I really do.
I think it's awesome that, that, you know, that we can respond and, and take out the phone and call people and reply via email. And I think you probably are one of the best of us at doing so and I encourage you to keep doing it, so.
I agree.
I don't, um, I don't have any issue with it.
Nothing divisive.
No.
Underhanded. We, we did it in a, we did it to try to make things more consistent and efficient. You want to just pull this out of consent agenda and have a vote on it at the next meeting? Everybody good with that?
Sure.
All right. Offer the authorization for committees to meet. We talked about the clean school teacher of the year. Uh, May fourth, we'll have our final, uh, teacher of the year. Review. That'll be exciting. We're to move into the executive session to discuss and deliberate upon employment, employment compensation, hiring, disciplinary action or dismissal or periodic evaluation rate of a public officer or employee or to interview applicants for the position of superintendent.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.